And welcome everyone to our February twenty first, a regular council meeting. Judy, if you'd like to call the room.
Yeah.
I am here.
Here.
Here. Brian Housh, but are not quite sure why is not yet here. We also have President by Zoom Village Manager Hosway Salmarone, Finance Director Amy Kemper, Planning and Zoning Administrator Denise Sawyer, Public Works Director Johnny Burns, Police Chief Paige Burge, and Village Solicitor Amy Blankenship.
All right. Thank you, Judy. As is our custom, I believe we're going to go ahead and begin the day with some swearings in. We have a couple of folks being sworn into the planning commission. First one up. Are you ready? You got a copy of your. All right, cool beans. All right. So let me just raise your right hand. Say, I repeat after me, please. I solemnly swear on my.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
Planning Commission. All right. Well, welcome. You are here. How many of those are there? You collecting them?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I thank you. Thank you.
Meeting, isn't that a requirement or this morning you're reading it to stay?
No, no.
Good to see you. Thank you for the right hand.
I see you across the street.
They please repeat after me. I solemnly swear or.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Planning Commission.
All right. Welcome once again. Is that right? Well, that one's special. Yeah. All right. Two.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Scott.
Way they. All righty. Announcements. Do we have any announcements? Other than what's listed on the agenda, which is the upcoming utility rate increase information that should be provided by someone. Is that gonna be Hosway or someone else?
I have an announcement, Kevin.
Sure. And can we, Hosway, can you hold your second? It is. Lacy is, is, is the public hearing Hosway better than I am? Okay. Okay. Well, let's see. Go ahead and say something, Hosway.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's.
All right.
It's surprisingly pleasant.
Surprisingly.
Pleasant for as loud as the TV is supposed to be.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I, we wanted to make an announcement about our water quality and water safety. I know that a lot of people are concerned, particularly with what's happening in East Palestine, and I completely understand the, the concern. We want the public and council to know that we're saddened by the chemical spill that's happened in, in East Palestine. And are hopeful that local, state, and federal authorities will find a swift resolution to ensure the safety of drinking water for residents of that area. Now, we wrote the statement prior to the news today that Governor Dewine and the EPA Administrator were at East Palestine this afternoon, and they went into residence homes and drank water that's, that is going through the municipal service into the residence home. So they're providing their reassurance that the water safety is intact in East Palestine and is safe enough to drink. We want to reassure residents that the village's drinking water is safe and is not impacted or threatened in any way by the recent train derailment and subsequent chemical spill that occurred in East, East Palestine on February third. The Village of Yellow Spring produces water reports that are available on our website. And we posted this on social media and the, our website today. We encourage residents to take a look at our annual reports, our well health protection plans, our water source protection plans. Those documents go in great detail how the village produces drinking water through the numerous wells we have in the sand and gravel aquifer that's located along the Little Miami River. It also highlights what our profile of our organization is, sorry, of our, of our water wells. So we want to reassure the residents that our village drinking water is safe to drink.
All right. Well, thank you. And as I moved to earlier, it does mention on the agenda an announcement regarding the rate increases. I mean, we do have legislation, but just wondering what, was there any particular intent about that? And if not, we will move on. All right.
I don't have anything else, and I'll cover the, the, the items that we discussed at the last meeting when we go into that piece of legislation.
Right, right. Go ahead, Judy.
If you're onto the next thing.
Sure.
I just wanted to note with much sadness, the passing of John Strewing, who served on Planning Commission for many years. And who is an absolute delight to serve with, super intelligent, very funny, and never let a meeting go one centilla of a second past nine o'clock for any reason. Just a great guy and very, very sad to hear of his passing.
Oh, well, thank you for that update. And I, I do, we do offer our condolences to the Strewing family, and I'm sorry to hear that. I hadn't heard. But we appreciate that update. Thank you, Judy. All righty. So now we are to the consent agenda. Excuse me, and on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and our credit card statement for February of twenty-three. And Judy, I can never remember if we can just do this all in one fell swoop.
Got to do them one at a time. So first the minutes then.
All right. Well, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. That motion has passed. And now it's our credit card statement for this month or for February twenty-three. And can I get a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. That motion has passed as well. All right. We are now going to review the agenda. As we look over the agenda, I'm asking if there's anything that needs to be added, deleted, modified, et cetera.
Can I, quick question to Amy? Did you bring the information regarding the single-use plastics?
Nothing on paper.
Okay, if we, I know that Brian had wanted just an under three-minute bit on adding some legislation around not using single-use plastics. Amy's done the background on it. And I think that bit of information would let you decide whether or not to bring legislation for the next meeting.
Okay.
So new business, if that's okay?
Yes, new business. And, and Mark, I'm looking at you. Would you have any input in that regarding the cups? Because I know it was an issue with last street fair.
Should we cover that? I think Amy's kind of got a, a general, here's how we can generally make it work without disrupting the ride.
Thank you.
I didn't want to respond. I didn't want to react to something that I haven't.
Got you. Got you. Thanks for being so gracious, and thank you to my colleagues for keeping me, keeping me straight. All righty. So nothing on the review of the agenda, other than the addition of new business. And we are down to petitions and communications. Just go ahead and run through that. Clerk has received a letter from Mark Heiss regarding street fair. Very. I chuckled because I wanted to say street fair and marital advice. But thanks for that, Mark. Brian Housh submitted the green, a green events guide, which is a, an outdoor event planning guide from the Columbus area. If you were here and asking what his intention was with that, and we have two reports from the mayor's clerk regarding the mayor's monthly reports, and that's what we have received at this point regarding petitions and communications. Right. If nothing more, we're going to move on to legislation. All right. And first of all, we'll have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Now, I'll stop for a second.
Yes. So you, I am sure what's in your mind right now is that you, Kevin, are going to ask for a motion to waive the full readings of all of the second reads of all of these many ordinances. Is that, was I correct?
That is exactly, Judy, verbatim. What I was going to do, and I will entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or is that, is this going to be a voice?
You can, you can, all in favor.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you much. Any opposition? Thank you very much. So on that note, Judy, if you could, please read by title only the second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
This is repealing old section ten forty-eight point zero five service charges of chapter ten forty-eight sewers and sewage entitled for public utilities, part ten streets, utilities and public services of the Cottopide Ordinance of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new section ten forty-eight point zero five service charges.
Nice. Thank you. All right. Hosway, I believe this is going to be you unless.
Do you want to go ahead and get your motion in?
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you. And, and we're all involved, the listening, you know. I appreciate all the help and all the guidance, because every time I do this is like the first time. All right. So can I get a motion?
Second.
All right. Still all in favor?
You are going to wait, and yes, it's at the end that you'll take your vote. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. So now I think we are ready to delve into this. And Hosway, is this you?
Yes, thank you, Kevin. And we can go into this as deep as you want to go into the, into the matter. The question that counsel raised last, last meet, last hearing on this was that counsel wanted to see the five-year, the five-year projections, particular for water and sewer, just for folks to have an idea, what does their bill look like at the end of this adjustment, five years? So I am going to share my screen and let me know once it's visible in your end. And this highlights the effect of what eight percent increases is going to have on the water rates and what the five percent rates increases are going to have on the sewer rates.
Okay, we can't see, can't see your display, by the way. We can.
You can? Okay, perfect.
Cannot.
You cannot.
Well, it's there. Well, maybe you can turn around, and that might be better for you if you really want to read it.
Okay, well, let me, let me, I don't know what the, what the configuration is on the screen up there, but I'll, I'll walk through it. I'll, I'll do my best to narrate what those changes are, if you recall.
And Hosway, Hosway, if you don't mind, please, just if you don't mind making the, the image as large as you can, just enlarge your screen as best you can.
Yes, let me, let me, let me do that. That might be, is that, that too big? That's probably too big.
Yeah, we're really drawing down one item at a time.
Yeah, no, that's, that's too big there. Let's see. Let's see. Okay, I think this gets the entire chart on the screen.
All right. Feels pretty good. Yeah, you may have to scroll when you're, when you're talking about the things on the far right. You may have to scroll a little bit so we can see those better, but I think we're good to start.
Okay, perfect. All right. So this illustrates the eight percent increases across the, the proposed five-year period. We're starting off at the current, the current year, the current rate for readiness for service fee at six eighty. The consumption for three thousand gallons of water comes out to a total of thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents for a combined total. That's for readiness for service and water charges for forty-six fifty-eight. An eight percent adjustment to the readiness for service fees means that readiness for service fee will become seven dollars and thirty-four, and thirty-four cents in, in the first year, and the charge for three thousand gallons of water will become forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Let me take a step back. If you recall, we estimated consumption by average household at, at three thousand gallons of water. And we did the similar calculation for average consumption on sewer service at three thousand gallons. So that's where that three thousand number is coming from, and we carry those assumptions throughout the five-year period. So for year one, the, the increase, the total charge for water, for water and readiness for service fee per month is going to be fifty dollars and thirty cents, which is just slightly under four dollar increase from the current rates. In year twenty twenty-four, the eight percent increase that results in a fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cent increase. That is an additional four dollars and three cents increase from twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-five, the rate, the total bill increases to fifty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Again, that's a little over four dollars increase there. And year, and twenty twenty-six, the rate, total charge increases to sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's a little bit over, about five dollars in increase. And then a rate in twenty twenty-seven, customers can expect a monthly bill of sixty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. So that is a total of about a little under twenty-two dollars that the bill will increase over a five-year period on a monthly basis.
Yeah, doesn't, it doesn't really sound that bad when you explain it like that. Thank you, Hosway. I can go ahead if there's more to say about this particular chart.
No, this is on the water rates. We carry the same assumptions down for the sewer. The sewer rates are increasing at a lower percentage, five percent across the board. The, the current rate on a monthly basis, it's costing customers forty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. The same, same estimates and numbers are being used for the calculating the bills for the next five years. The readiness for service fee is fixed across the residential customers. The consumption is being estimated at three thousand gallons per month for sewer charges. And those eight percents are factored in on each, the readiness for service and the consumptions chart. So in the first year, the, once approved by council, on a monthly basis, the resident should expect to have an average monthly bill of forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. That's slightly over two dollars and twelve cents increase per month. And year twenty twenty-four, the bill goes on a monthly basis to forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. That's a total of four dollars and thirty-seven cents from our current rate. In year twenty twenty-five, the bill goes to forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. That's a three dollars, slightly under, under under three dollars for year twenty-four to twenty-five, but it is a, almost a seven dollar increase from the current rate at forty-two sixty-one to year twenty twenty-five. For year twenty twenty-six, the total monthly bill is expected to be fifty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. In year twenty twenty-seven, the bill is expected to be fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for an average household consuming three thousand gallons of water per month. That is an increase of twelve dollars over the current bill.
All right. All right. Yeah, council, any questions? And, and I'm going to go ahead and open the, the public meeting. So we'll start with council. Ask if you have any questions or comments.
Okay.
Were we going to do electric or like after later?
Well, that's a good question, Hosway. The question was, are we going to do the electric increases now or as we get into the next piece of leg, or the relative piece of legislation?
The, the electric rates, we're, we have a couple of things that are changing on the electric side. We have rates that are changing, and we have transmission charges that are changing that make the numbers estimate a bit difficult because the, the cost power adjustment is going to change over, over time. The looking at, or if you recall from the presentation, I, in, in the memo, the PCA is a small portion of the overall bill, and that number is going to adjust depending on what our costs are, what our, our power costs are for the year. The, in twenty twenty-two, we saw air power cost increase by nine and a half percent, and that was attributed to no increase, actually a decrease in sales, an increase in power cost due to the changes of energy prices. If you recall, we had to, we purchased energy under contracts because the gas rates were going high. Now, gas rates are lower. Now we're hitting, we're in the lowest gas market since we've been in twenty twenty. And we're also after coming out of record-high gas prices. So if the current gas prices continue as they are, it's going to have some effect on the energy that we're buying on the market. But if they increase significantly, we're protected against significant price increases because we purchased additional renewable energy under contract late last year. So where the number is, is small, and there's a lot of room for change. But again, it's a smaller portion of the bill. It's three percent. Three percent that we're factoring in, there's going to be primarily adjusting for, for inflationary cost, the power cost.
Didn't we be covering that when we get to that legislation?
Well, the question was asked now, I don't know if you heard that, but first. Yeah, but Mary was asking, shouldn't we cover that when we get to the legislation? But if I'm understanding you right, you've got detailed, detailed information on the slide you just shared, but are you saying you don't have that level of detail for the electric cost because it's a bit more fluid?
I, I, right, that's correct. And part of the, the reason I didn't create that slide is we're seeing gas, gas prices go down. So I, that's going to affect our, our power cost. And we, we're, we're going to meet with our ampokes in the coming quarter to see what energy charges are going to do. So I'm hopeful that we could figure out a strategy where it's not going to exceed three percent of the current power cost adjustment that customers are seeing. I will put up that, that, um, that section of the memo again for, for the benefit of the public and council so they can see that portion, what, what, um, what portion of the bill that we're talking about. So, uh, and this is from your memo, should be in your, in your packet. It, it highlights how the, the power cost is estimated in the total bill. So it talks about the kilowatt rate, which is fixed at eleven cents for residential customer. That is not changing. We're not proposing any change to the kilowatt rate. Then it, then the power cost adjustment is, is calculated. Then it's the kilowatt tax that gets remitted to the general fund and schools, and then there's the readiness for service. The item that we're going to be addressing through this ordinance that council be voting on is the PCA. So on an average bill where a household consumes eight hundred and seventy-seven kilowatts per month, we're looking at that power cost adjustment to be about twenty dollars and eight cents of a bill, bill out of a hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. So this is where that three percent adjustment is going to increase to ensure that we're covering the call, the increased cost as that's changing over, over time. So moving forward, moving forward for a five-year period, we're not changing the kilowatt rate. So that kilowatt rate is going to stay the same over the five-year period. The readiness for service is going to remain at fifteen dollars per month for the five-year period. The tax moves along with the kilowatt rate because it's all dependent on how much kilowatt consumption is done by the customer. We're paying that tax, or we're collecting it from that tax for, from the customer and remitting it to the corresponding entities. That change is based on consumption. The more kilowatts that a homeowner consumes, the higher that tax will be. But if you look at, if you see here from this chart, on an average household that consumes eight hundred and seventy-seven kilowatts per month, the PCA cost is twenty dollars and eight cents. It's going to go up in year one to twenty dollars and sixty-eight cents. The kilowatt tax stays the same because the kilowatt rate stays the same.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, well, I guess. So two questions, one that was related to what you just showed there. So when you're saying that, so which is the, which of these costs is the one that you're not sure about for the future?
The PCA cost, the power cost adjustment, because that's the term.
So are you saying, okay, I understand what it, what it depends on, but I just, it wasn't clear. So it's the PCA, and so you're saying that what we're, what we would be passing would increase the PCA by three percent per year as a baseline.
Correct.
Okay. And then, so then the only other thing that came that I, and I don't, I'm, maybe I'm doing the math wrong or something. But whereas on the other ones, the increases are truly across the board, as in they cover every single component of the bill. This one is only the PCA. And so by my math on, if you had a bill that was one thirty five sixty two and it goes up to one thirty six twenty three, it's, I basically, I feel like our messaging is wrong. It's not a three percent increase. It's a point zero four five percent increase. Is there anything about that that's such, so like this table that says proposed three percent increase is not on all of those items, just on one? So this, this, um, this, um, you know, the electric bills are only effectively going up point zero four five percent. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, that would, that would be generally accurate.
Okay.
When I say generally, because the kilowatt, depending on how much kilowatt the consumption is, you know, the the higher, the higher the kilowatt consumption is, it'll die.
Sure.
The PCA, the PCA number, so that overall percent.
For the average person, it is point zero four five percent. Anyway, it's not a mi- it's just, just to say that we're, it's actually not a three percent increase on electric. It is a less than one percent uh change on electric for the average customer. That was all.
All right. Anyone else in the public with comments? Anyone else from, anyone from staff? I love seeing you all lined up like that, by the way. All right, so uh the, I'm gonna close the public uh hearing at this point. And Judy, if you would call the role.
Yes, DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Judy, if you could, read title only. Um, well, this is a first reading, so I guess it doesn't really matter. Either way.
No, these are, we're going second reading right down the right down the line on all of the utility ordinances. So indeed, I will read it as I title only.
Please do, and I won't explain what I just did, but I was looking at the wrong.
Always. This is repealing old section ten forty six point zero two service charges, exemption of chapter ten forty six water of title for public utilities, part ten streets utilities and public services of the codified ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new section ten forty six point zero two service charges exemption.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Um, well, so this is um someone just give the hostway and you say what you need to, or if we've covered it already, let's move on.
Thank you, Kevin. I covered the overall uh rate structured. I'm happy to take any questions or I I can go through any numbers you want me to go through.
Yeah, and and I appreciate and and Marion, to your question earlier, you know, we were looking at one chart that covers more than one area. So uh in that we've, we've discussed that already. The public meeting is open and I would open the floor for council or the public with any comments or questions. All right, being none, I'm closing the public meeting. And Judy, I'm gonna ask you to call the role.
All right, Brown.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now, second reading and public hearing for this twenty twenty two dash zero four.
This is repealing old section ten forty two point zero one electric service charges of chapter ten forty two electricity. Municipal light and power of title four, public utilities of part ten streets utilities and public services code of the cod- codified ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new section ten forty one point zero one, electric service charges with a new rate structure.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
Thank you very much. Um, I will open the public hearing. Hossway, did you want to add anything additional to that? And also council, feel free to comment.
The only thing I would add is that the the PCA, in this case for electric, eh, we're, we're getting used that uh AES, who is our distributor, is looking to increase distribution charges. Uh so I think that that has the potential of affecting our rates and we'll have to pass that on to the customers. Uh so those are, those are our costs that are considered um to be passed on to the customer uh and our ordinances. And I don't know if Johnny's in the room, if if you wanna hear from Johnny on that matter.
Johnny is in the room and Johnny, we invite you to come up if you feel you would like to contribute. I, that looks like a note. All righty, we will take a note. Uh, yes.
I'm not clear. What is AES or VS or whatever it is? I'm not.
I I'm sorry, AES is a, is now the owner of day and power and light. So we use the day and power and light distribution network to get our electricity. So now AES owns them.
All right. Any other comments uh from the public? Anything else from council? All right, I am closing um the public hearing. And Judy, may I ask you to call the role, please?
All right, DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are cooking. Second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero five. Judy, if you could read that by title only.
All right, this is repealing and replacing section four thirty two point four five text based communications of the codified ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, to reflect changes in state law.
All right, can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. Who has a lead on this one, please?
Hello.
Hello.
I think this, uh, we discussed the last meeting that this was just putting the ordinance or updating the ordinance locally to make sure that we could cite these offenses into our mayor's court. Um, the update to the law is essentially that previously, the texting, I mean, it's commonly referred to as texting, but electronic devices, distracted driving, essentially, that was a secondary offense, which meant that if someone were texting and driving or distracted driving, that would be something we couldn't stop for. We would have to cite the person after we stopped them for a primary offense. So this is the change in that law and this is the actual uh local ordinance for that, so that we can cite initially.
And Chief, uh, Virge, if you could, is it true that uh this is sort of mirroring what's happening at the state level?
That's very accurate, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions uh from council? Um, thank you very much, chief. Uh, does public have any questions or comments? And I have not, Judy, been looking at um Zoom for hands, but I'm not seeing any now, so.
And there are not, and you did just officially open a public hearing, did you not?
I did, I feel like.
Thank you, I thought you did.
Until about ten seconds ago, we were the only ones on Zoom now that Yellow Springs news have come in.
Oh, all right, all right. Well, welcome all. All right, um, and you have the any comments from the public or council regarding this particular ordinance? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing and Judy, may I ask you to call the role, please?
Yes, McQueen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Second reading public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero six. Judy, if you could read that by title only, please.
All right, this is repealing and replacing appendix A to section twelve seventy two point zero four of the Yellow Springs zoning code establishing permit fees.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
All right, thank you very much. I see activity.
Um, so uh this is the second reading. Um, I just reminder that we, we looked at communities similar to ours, communities larger than ours, townships, came up with the kind of overall average and then also factored in any ancillary expenses like advertising, postage, all that fun stuff. And I think we came up with something that is fair.
All right, great. And thank you once again, Denise, for you and your support team for the work that you've done.
Yeah.
Sure, you're welcome. I am opening the public hearing on this ordinance. Um, council, questions, comments? All right, does the public have any comments regarding this ordinance? All right, hearing none, I am closing the public hearing. And Judy, I would ask you to call the role, please.
All right, Brown.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on, we're now to the second reading of public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero seven. Judy, if you could read that by title only.
All right, this is repealing and replacing section two forty two point zero one composition classification of the codified ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, to add the position of deputy chief.
All right, can I get a motion?
Move. Second.
All right. I'm looking at Chief Burge, but I will take comments from anyone on staff that might wanna speak to this.
Again, second reading here. Um, I don't think anybody had any questions last time. If you have any questions, I included them other than asking pretty good details in it. I think that's also included in your packet, so just open to questions if anyone has any.
Anything from council, the public, having now just opened the public hearing? Okay.
For sure.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right. Well, thank you, Chief Burge.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no comments from the public that was recently invited to speak. I'm gonna close the public hearing now. And Judy, I'm gonna ask you to call the role, please.
All right. Stokes.
I say yes, yes.
Brown.
Yes.
DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we have an emergency reading of ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero eight. Judy, if you could uh read that in by title only. And I'd like for someone to help me understand, uh, help the public understand why uh this is an emergency today.
All right, and I'll preface it by saying that nothing in this ordinance has changed other than the title and the last, whereas declaring that it is emergency. Um, here you go, I'll try to read it in an emergent manner. Repealing and replacing section two fifty two point zero one personnel classification of the codified ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, to create additional positions and adjusting pay levels and declaring an emergency.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All righty. So that I don't forget, I'm gonna open the public hearing now. And uh Johnny, I saw you uh stand up, so if you could uh please share with us.
Okay, so let me explain the reason why it's an emergency. If we do a second reading on this, that means that I can't hire staff or give any offer letters for another thirty days after today. I'm trying to get staff in here by first week in March. And that goes for a couple of them are new positions, but we can't even hire anybody because we have pay code changes. So that's the reason why it's an emergency is because that way applications are due by the twenty eighth. I can start interviews. I don't have to wait until after the twenty first to offer people jobs. We can actually get them on board.
Excellent, excellent.
You remind us of positions.
We have uh two uh level threes in streets, parks and sewer. We have one level four in streets, parks and sewer. We have a level three in water distribution, a level four in water distribution, a journeyman, lineman and a lead journeyman lineman. And we have an apprentice out there because if we don't catch a lead lineman, we might be able to get an apprentice. So we have the full staff.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Johnny. Um, council and the public, uh, the public hearing is open. Are there any other questions or comments? All righty, thank you very much. Hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. And Judy, may I ask you to call the role?
All right, Brown.
Yes.
DeVore Leonard.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Emergency reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero nine, if you could read that in by title only, Judy?
Right, this is approving a supplemental appropriation for the first quarter of twenty twenty three and declaring an emergency in the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
All right, can I get a motion?
Moved, say it.
All righty. Thank you, Amy, for coming up.
Uh, we can go over the supplemental real quickly. Uh, we added forty thousand dollars to property taxes because we're getting a uh repeal of the CAUV for a couple of our properties. And we also have loss in place, which we are in the process of uh filing for uh nonprofit status. So that's an additional for this year, but that takes a whole year. You have to pay the first year and then you get it, then you're you're on Easy Street after that.
Okay.
Public safety, um, they have two grants that they receive revenue from. So we need to increase the expense so they can expend the ones for homeless food and the other one is for the therapy dog, therapy dog. The transfer in advance is an interesting one. We have um a one point two million dollar grant for the water capital fund, which we need to pay for first and get reimbursed. So we're going to loan, the um, the general fund is going to loan the water capital fund five hundred thousand dollars for that first draw. And then from then on, they should be able to pay themselves. And then at the end of that um loan cycle or that um construction cycle, that transfer comes back to the general fund with no strings attached.
All right.
Center stood.
Got it.
And then the last one is um just a twenty thousand eight twenty four in the electric fund. And that is because iron table fees came in for uh zoning and permits that we have to remit on top of that. So it's just an additional, it's just a pass through.
Great, great. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Amy.
I knew, I I don't understand that, the last one, would you?
It is um permit fees that we received from iron table on beach.
Holdings.
And it's telling. And also they paid the eight things, the structural, the transit.
So it's, it's funds that came into us that now we need to spend that we had not anticipated.
Oh, okay.
Great, great. All right. All, all hearts and minds clear.
Really quickly on the nonprofit status for loss in place. Yeah, law, non-things, nonprofit status for loss in place. Is that an application that's currently in with the feds?
It's a, it's an exemption from property taxes.
Okay.
So it is in with the county, which then sends it to the state and it has to get approved at the state level.
Okay, I gotcha.
Six, eight months.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great.
I I am surprised that.
Just, uh, Marianne, you didn't, Hossway.
Yeah, I I I'm surprised about that because I know Home Inc. has never been able to get tax deferment. Or uh, or at least, maybe they have now, but uh so I'm surprised, I mean.
It's not an easy process. Um, we filed because it's a low income, below market level rent that we're charging as a municipality. So um, we'll see what happens. Amy helped us out with some of the, the language and the um ORC state status, so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
So does that mean that then that we need to continue a certain level of rent, which I mean, I support, but I would assume it would mean that.
Yes, it does mean that. If I may jump in, um, when we priced the rental rates for the lost in place properties, we wanted to be, we wanted to make a case for the tax exemption down the road. So the, the market rate rent, something that uh a rate that is set by green metropolitan housing in our area, it's eight hundred and thirty dollars. Our rents are well below that uh, that percentage that is set by green metropolitan housing. So we're using that difference to justify our position that we're providing a public service for low income residents of loss in place by offering below market rates by X percentage below that eight hundred and thirty. This is a, there's language in ORC that allows for this exemption. We're pursuing it and, you know, I think we have a good case to make. We have section eight uh residents. We have of other folks that would certainly need the low income designation. So it's worth trying this uh, this opportunity and we'll see where it goes from there. Now, I can't speak to Home Inc.'s uh approach to, to this. Um, we may be in a different position because of our municipal government status versus Home Inc. being a five oh one.
Yeah, and when I was there, there weren't rentals, so that, that might make a difference. So since uh we're talking about loss in place, I have asked for a pro forma a number of times and haven't received it. So Amy, I'm gonna ask you, what uh what will it take for council to be able to see an income and expense report that plays out for, I don't know, five years i- in addition with the funds that we've already expended? Is that, is that something?
It's in, if we can do it for twenty twenty two, we haven't had it for a full year. Remember, you purchased it in February. Twenty twenty three, it's gonna be a little more interesting because I think there's a lot of um balls in the air as far as who manages loss in place, what happens to loss in place, do we keep it? And that's all gonna be done in. The pro forma will be done as we look at those alternatives, if that makes sense.
So, so what, in your opinion, how far out does it make sense to project? One year, two years?
I I wouldn't go more than three years, probably.
So you could do a three. So you could do a three year.
I think we could do.
Two thousand twenty-two.
You're on board.
Yes, uh, yeah, Marianne, we haven't, we haven't fulfilled your request because, not because we haven't wanted to, we haven't closed the year. We closed the year. Um, Amy, was it two, three weeks ago that we closed the year? We were still doing some, uh, some adjustments. So we just recently closed twenty twenty-two. I can tell you right now, I reviewed the numbers with Johnny just briefly, uh, before I left last week. And, you know, we're, we have some good numbers to, to report um, on the performance of loss in place. So now that we have, we provide a council with the one-year pro forma before we purchased the property. Now we have one years of, uh, cost that we, in revenue that we can compare to our pro forma and we can see how well the pro forma performed uh, against actual financial, uh, expenditures and revenues. So we have one, that one-year data and we can project out the next two years. We have a bit of a better idea of how much unit renovations cost and what pending capital projects are left to do on the building. So if we wanted to account for those in the pro forma, we could. But we're, we're now in a position where we can confidently give you numbers, uh, against our pro forma that we presented to council before we purchased the building.
So what would be a timeline on that?
Yeah. When? When can we see that?
We could have it, we can have a preliminary report unless there's any specific data you want to see by next council meeting on the, on the six.
The next council meeting? Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Amy. All right, um, hearing no other questions, um, this being a resolution, I'm just going to ask, um.
It's actually an ordinance.
Am I jumping around again?
You are.
I am. I'm sorry. Um. My, my little fat finger was in the right place. Oh, gosh. It's all right. So. Yep. So we are now opening the public hearing. I didn't because I, I was looking at the resolution. I'll get this down before the meeting is over. Um, so the public hearing is open regarding, uh, the emergency reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. Are there any questions from the public or additional comments or questions from council? All right, hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Judy, if you could call the roll.
All right, Brown.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yeah.
Yes. Deboer Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you once again, Amy. Now we're going on to the reading of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Thank you, Judy.
And it's actually twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Just for a lot of reasons.
Okay.
But that mistake is not yours.
Great. Yeah, I've had enough. So let me, let me restate. We are now reading resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Judy, if you could do that by title.
Thanks very much. This is authorizing payment of invoices with then announced certificate for the first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion?
I move. Second.
Um. But I guess I'll ask all of you. Thanks. Now, Amy, now I know why you're still standing there. Thank you.
Um, there's two then and now invoices that we need approval for the water treatment plant replacement loan, which is a semi-annual for twenty-one thousand six sixty-six, sixty-seven. We did not open a PO on one-one. We will. And we have one open for the second half of the year, but we need your permission for the first half. And the second one is, uh, the USI loss in place insurance. We did not have a PO open large enough for that one because we did not have to pay a full year uh, insurance on that. So we're asking for a fifty-five, sixty, eighty as a then and now on that one as well.
Okay. All right. Questions from council? Um, this being a resolution, we don't typically, uh, open a public hearing, but does anyone else in the room have questions, comments? All righty. Thank you very much. And Judy, I will now ask if you could call the roll on this resolution just for you guys.
Just for you. Okay, indeed. McQueen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Deboer Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, um. Unless I'm missing something, we are now, through spirit's little concerns. And this is where, uh, members of the public have an opportunity to share their thoughts with us, uh, regarding subjects that are not currently on the agenda. Do we have any citizens' concerns?
Well, I have one. It sounds like you're bringing it up.
Oh.
About the, uh, one use plan.
Yes, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Citizen concerns? All righty, we are closing citizen concerns, uh, regarding public comments. And now we are to a special report from the Public Arts and Culture Commission, uh, with their end of year report. And Amy, you have the floor.
All right.
Amy, Amy three.
Amy, all right. Um, so I'm Amy Wamsley. I'm with the Public Arts and Culture Commission today. Um, so this is our twenty twenty-two annual report and twenty twenty-three goals. It's just some stuff we're working on in twenty twenty-three. Uh. Yeah, uh, the twenty twenty-two commission members, uh, were Cheryl Durgans, myself, Nia Brevic, Lori Freeman, John Fleming, Dr. Catherine Roma, Wardell Kirk, Michael Caselli, and then Carmen and Gavin from council. Um, I did not put Lisa Krieger on here, but she was actually part, uh, at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, and we're very thankful for her service. She was really great to work with. So I wanted to make sure I said that. Um, commission update, the PACC, uh, found some of our progression and some of our projects are moving slower than originally anticipated. Uh, some of the projects were put on hold, uh, as the delay in responses from some of our partners were slower than we anticipated. But through twenty twenty-two, we did a lot of research and discussion of the projects. And our intent is that a lot of those do come to fruition in twenty twenty-three. This includes murals, busking guidelines, a change in the south side banner, as well as partnerships for upcoming celebrations and honoring and preserving the history of Yellow Springs. Twenty twenty-two year in review would include in February, uh, we did the protest poster exhibit again on all the lamp posts. Uh, we started that in twenty twenty. We did it in twenty twenty-one. We did it in twenty twenty-two. We did not do it this winter. Um, but what we, you should be expecting in the paper, uh, a request for submissions, if you just want to go to the next slide. We are looking for, um, protest, uh, po- poster, uh, submissions for anyone who may have one that they've used recently. Uh, we have twenty-eight posters now and we're looking to extend that uh, so that we can hang it, uh, either later in twenty twenty-three into twenty twenty-four. So we wanted to do that. We are asking that people get them to us if possible by March seventeenth. That way we can look at them at our next commission meeting. So you should be looking for that in the paper. That's just an old slide of some of our old posters. We can go to the next slide. Okay, in April and May, uh, we did a celebration education of diversity, uh, in Yellow Springs. So we talked a lot about this. Um, as we were trying to come up with a mural that we are going to be putting at Gaunt Park Pool. There's been a big discussion of murals at Gaunt Park Pool. Um, and so what we did was we formed a subcommittee to do that. It did get put on hold, uh, momentarily, but the idea is, and again, you'll be seeing a some, uh, a request, um, for public engagement in the paper this week. And what that's about is we are looking, um, specifically for, uh, the mural, uh, is to be a combination piece, uh, sort of like a quilt design of, um, maybe inventions, quotes, symbols, uh, different things of what Yellow Springs means to our community members. And we were hoping to commission uh, an artist to design that and then have community members also sort of help participate in painting. But we would add a QR code to it so that it would become an educational piece. So people could scan the QR code and learn about what all, all the pieces that make up the mural mean in Yellow Springs. So that way it's a celebration and an educational piece. Next slide is the public engagement announcement that you should be seeing in the paper. And again, the goal is to really get the planning started officially, the design worked through and everything so that this could actually hopefully go up at Gaunt Pool in spring, summer and, and be done in twenty twenty-four. So that way we have plenty of time. Um, so hopefully you'll be seeing some design options coming to council later on in the year. Um, April through August, we worked on busking, which is, you all are familiar with. So I'm just going to keep going there. Uh, we are working, I should say, we are working on busking, um, uh, guidelines and all of that at our next commission meeting. So that is going to be an ongoing project, but you're all familiar with busking. Um, in May, we gave the VITA award to Clean Gene Lowman. So we wanted to recognize him for his contributions to the community. And then in May, also Lori Freeman designed, um, a reproductive rights banner that hung across sixty-eight. Again, please check the paper because we are actually looking to add a slogan across that banner. Um, so we're looking, if you want to go to the next slide, we are actually looking for word design submissions to enhance that banner. Um, our goal is to put that then on the banner because you can put it on a stickers or what have you. So Digital Fringe will make that for us. Um, and so we are asking that somebody, you know, come up with an idea and send those in. And again, that'll be in the paper. Then in June, uh, we voted and gave, um, money to celebrate the Juneteenth celebration in the walk. So that happened in June. In October, we gave another VITA award. Um, and that was for the little library that is in Gaunt Park. If you haven't seen it, you should go see it. It's really a lovely piece of art and it also celebrates the culture of Yellow Springs. So three sixty-five has some really great literature in there. So highly encourage people to do that. What came out of this though, also is we had requested the statue of the VITA be moved there. Um, but it's pretty cumbersome for village crew. And so what came out of that is a need to possibly redesign that logo in the award. Um, and so we approached Zeno Dewey, who designed the original uh, logo and certification and all of that. And they are going to work with Michael Caselli, um, to come up with a new award and sign. So that's exciting. Um, in November, we honored indigenous peoples. Um, we hung a banner using the words of Shane Cuping Bear and some people that he collaborated with. Um, and, uh, that, I just wanted to point out that that was actually hung, um, by PACC members using their own personal money. Um, and then going into December, we officially changed the VITA award language. I want to point this out because I think it's a, a big deal. Um, we changed especially in the second paragraph. The Public Art and Culture Commission, on behalf of the village of Yellow Springs, presents the VITA to a resident or local business owner who creatively enhances the overall culture of Yellow Springs and makes a transformational artistic contribution to the village. The goal is to recognize inspirational art in its many forms that enrich the community. So that's really important because before it was just design, sculpture, and because we had given the award to, to Clean Gene, we were like, we need to change this because there's so many other art forms that contribute to our culture and who we are in Yellow Springs. So we updated that in December. And then going into twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, this is another continuing project. Um, so coming out of the discussion around the mural and the celebration and education of diversity in our community, it really came to light that we're losing our history. And, um, you know, there's stuff in people's boxes and basements. Um, a lot of large organizations here are struggling with figuring out how to preserve, um, literature or artifacts or what have you. And so it became a big discussion on archiving. So we talked to, we've talked to the Y S Community Foundation. We've talked to some local archivists, um, some other nonprofit volunteers. And so we have identified that there is a need to preserve Yellow Springs history. As a result, what we are doing is, um, we're going to be hosting some edu- an educational component uh, for those who are interested. So, you know, what is archiving? How do you archive? Where are partners, uh, who can help store your archives for you, whether it be colleges or different libraries? And then also funding that's available, um, to people who, in, in organizations that are interested in archiving. So more information should be coming out about that in the next sixty days. Um, one of the things that is on the top of our list right now is the replacement of the Black Lives Matter banner down at the south side of town. If you've driven down sixty-eight, it looks really bad. Um, so we have asked for its immediate removal. Um, we would like to replace it. Um, and what, how we would like to replace it is, um, with the development of a rotating gallery that honors and celebrates diversity through the eyes of artists. Um, so these banners can be displayed in between like events or other banners that, um, you know, the village would like to hang, but the idea is to just continue to build that. So maybe they should, we get one or two and then build that. So it's just rotating artist. And that's it for my update.
Great. Amy, I, I appreciate all this information and, and you, you, the last thing you said was one or two, and I was going to ask uh, what, what you thought it might look like in terms of the number of rotating, rotating objects you, you might have at that, at that spot.
Well, it depends on how much money council will give us.
Ah.
And, you know, if we can partner with somebody, uh, great, you know, if we can find somebody to partner and maybe purchase a banner or what have you.
Right.
But that's really what it, it comes down to money.
Yeah, and you mentioned a, a company earlier that was maybe coming up with something to help with the, um.
Oh, Digital Fringe.
Okay, Digital Fringe. So would they be doing the work for the various banners that you would have in rotation?
They are the vendor for the village. So that's who we typically order all of the banners through. So, yeah, I mean, that's ideally who we would use.
Yeah.
Because they know, they know all of our sizing, uh, for the village. So when you call them, they know immediately, like, I want a big lamp post banner. I want a small lamp post banner. I want the banner across sixty-eight. They just know immediately.
Right.
Exactly what we need.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I, I will, just for the sake of argument, I'll mention Spark Station at, um, Spark Place, I think they, yeah. At, uh, Xenia Library, which is about to undergo renovation. Uh, but, but, uh, Spark Place, I think will still be operational.
Yeah, well, and we use that for the Indigenous Peoples banner.
Great.
So we are keeping that in mind and utilizing that when, when possible.
Okay. And then the other thing, uh, regarding, uh, the, the discussion of archiving, I, I am not representing Indiana College when I say this. Uh, but I happen to know that the historical side, the Yellow Springs Historical Society has at least a room, um, in the basement of McGregor Hall on the Indiana's campus. Um, I do not know how much space is available, but I would think that maybe there's somebody at the college you could talk to about archival space because there are a lot of, there are several of those small rooms that I believe are, are perhaps underutilized at, at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Um, I would say talk to me and I'll give you a name.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else?
Yeah.
Uh, I appreciate that you're doing the Archot project and in the last several years, as elders have died, I'm so aware of people in, in, sitting here who probably don't know some of the things that people have done. And it's really the people who, who are the people who have lived here, whose shoulders we are standing on as this, as they say, uh, who have made this place what it is. So I'm hopeful that you can raise, rise up, whatever the right term is, some of those people that have had such an impact.
Yeah, I, I've actually learned a lot just sitting on the commission and talking to the other people on the commission about the history of Yellow Springs and where everything is. So hopefully we can. Thank you. That's our goal.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Amy and
Thank you.
Public Arts and Commission, Co- uh, Com- Commission. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, Arts and Culture. I think I said that almost right.
You had a large there.
Yeah, a lot of syllables and stuff. Yeah. All righty, um, I think we're to the manager's report. Can that be at eight oh seven?
Yeah.
Yep, unless there's another special report. I don't think there are. So, hopefully you have the floor for your manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Um, all right, top of the, top of the report, I put in some language about the gas aggregation. We find ourselves in a unique opportunity or time, in terms of timing. I mentioned earlier that we are in a, looking at a record low on gas prices since twenty twenty. Uh, over the last year, we've been interviewing several potential partners on gas aggregation. Mary Anne introduced us to a council of government, uh, ag- agency, SOPAC, that essentially could do, uh, everything we need to do to run our own gas aggregation. Now shortly, uh, the gas aggregation program is not new to the village of Yellow Springs. We ran a successful one uh, for many years and it was, uh, it was terminated by PUCO and I've included a link to those files in the manager's. And I've included a link to those files in the manager's report. Uh, but we wanna, we wanna bring uh gas aggregation program back online. Uh, I would like to gauge council's interest so that we can start putting in uh the action items for for those projects. I think this has the potential of saving our residents' money in their heating and cooking costs and other things that they may be using gas for. Uh, I I don't know how long the we're going to be seeing record low gas prices. I understand that the Fremont plant in Texas is gearing up to export uh natural gas overseas, and that's going to drive supply down in the United States and increase price. Uh, so I think the, in speaking with the representatives from SOPAC, there is a sense of urgency on their side. If we want to lock in the price or or take advantage of the record low prices, obviously they will work at whatever schedule council uh wants to wants to roll out this program. Uh, so that's that's our number one, our number one top priority uh from a legislative activity. Um, there, I put in several things on my report and I'm open to questions.
That's why can you explain gas aggregation just a little bit more so people understand how and how that might work, opt in, opt out, what?
Sure, sure. So the many years ago, the village put before the citizens uh a a ballot initiative, whether they wanted a gas aggregation or what type of gas aggregation program they wanted. Uh, what the citizens approved were an opt-out program for gas aggregation, meaning that everyone in the village's service area would be automatically rolled into the gas aggregation prices to the rates that were negotiated by the village. Residents would have the option to opt out, but that is an action that they would have to manually uh i- initiate, or they would have to call the broker, call our our program administrator to uh choose to opt out. Um, we will be looking to bring back the existing model that the village had, which is an opt-out program. Once the council passes, Lee adopts an operations plan, we will resume our gas aggregation. So all the residents would be would be registered in the program upon, if they're already in the open market, those folks would just be rolled into the or at or gas aggregation program. Folks that uh have an existing contract, those contracts will stay in place until they expire, they go on the open market, and then they'll be enrolled in our program. So this would not terminate any business relationships that a current resident or business customer already has with a gas supplier. Uh, it would be dependent uh upon the termination of the contract. Um, what we're able to do through a gas aggregation is we pool the purchasing power of all of our of all of our customers' residents to leverage better pricing on or on our gas purchase. That's what the gas aggregation does is leveraging your purchasing power as a community versus, you know, individually, we go out and buy what uh what what is the cheapest gas. Certainly, as an individual consumer, I would not get as uh as uh low as low price as going up with an entire community of over thirty-eight hundred folks. Did I do enough, Mary Ann, to cover that?
Yeah, yeah, I just wasn't sure everyone understood.
And I've made the recommendation in my report to recommend SOPAC. Uh, they are a council of government agency, so they have to meet all the same standards that we as a public entity have to meet auditing process, public meetings, there's there's all the transparency big uh built in. From a cost structure, there they will need to cover their costs. There isn't necessarily private shareholders that need to make money. So I think it aligns well with wh- how we run our utilities. Um, no commentary on the other two providers that we looked at. I think they run a great program. I I was able to see what they've negotiated uh for other uh communities and and partnerships. I think they do well. Um, I think the SOPAC best aligns with our philosophy and business practices.
Yeah, I mean, um, it seems like can I you're you're asking for feedback from council. I'd just say I certainly would support this and I would encourage you to bring legislation to council.
In in the in the folder that I shared with council, I put in the presentation of the three providers. Um, is there anything you want to see from SOPAC or any of the other providers? I'm happy to schedule uh have a presentation from SOPAC come to speak with council. Um, you know, we can also work that offline too. I will be happy to meet with two council members and we can start hiring out the timetable and and bring this back to council with all the necessary legislation.
But Mary Ann, since you've been taking the.
I think having a presentation, I mean, I would be inclined to go with whatever that and that acronym is, but I've I met them and um I think they the value system is good with Yellow Springs, and I think having a presentation would be helpful.
Okay. All right, um, so uh hearing that, um, not sure who's going to take the lead on that, but I would submit that we have an existing sort of subcommittee between I think Hossway, Mary Ann and Brian, I think they all been involved. So um, so we will look to you all for next steps, whether it's the meeting or or more information. And 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 also just to be clear, regardless of what happens at the aggregation level, distribution would stay the same. So whoever someone's paying their bill to, it would still be that entity. And I could say Vectren, but I know that may they may have changed names uh a- as well, but but that wouldn't, but the 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 end user wouldn't see a change. They would still keep paying the bill to whoever their distributor is.
Correct, correct. They would still be paying to Center Point. Um, just the supplier line will change. It will be aggregation program, right? So they'll still have pay their bills and normally they would were uh pay their bills. I hope that everyone will see a reduction in um cost per CCF that they purchase.
Good, sounds good.
Mary Ann and Brian and and uh look to bring that back. Uh, in my manager's report, I I I'm I'm proud that we are uh ahead of schedule, so I'm gonna try to get that uh momentum going. So I just briefly shared that we've uh put in information on the lodging tax. Uh, that information's in the in the report. Please let me know if uh you need to have any questions on any of that or anything else in my manager's report, and I can follow up offline.
All right, I think we're good. Anything else, Council? Okay, great. All right, thank you, Hossway. This is a very, um, thanks for the highlights and a very comprehensive report in the packet. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All righty.
And quick question, does the link, does the link work for you guys? I I'm, you know, I I don't want to pack the the council packets with all these documents. You know, just the presentations will be another fifty pages and whatnot. And so I'm providing the link so that if you want to spend more time or you want to have a nighttime reading, you just hit the link. You go to it, okay?
Yeah, I I heard heard from one of my colleagues that that the link that the link did work. Yep, all right. Excellent. So now, I believe, um, old business. So thank you again, Hossway. Um, so old business, uh, we have next step steps in review of the village policing. And um Gavin, you've got that?
Yeah, so hopefully everybody read the memo. This is just continuing, just I just finishing what we've talked about before. Um, so I don't know if there's any questions. I I kind of feel like if I, the only thing I would have done differently is made recommend recommendation two, recommendation one, because I hopefully that will take approximately ten seconds. And then the other one is, you know, more complex arguably, uh, it is. Um, so I guess I would just start with, are there any general questions? Um, or would it be okay to begin by talking about recommendation two?
I I'm I'm, I've gone through what's what's here and um, yes, I'm, if you want to drill down on on that recommendation, uh, first, I'm I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, um, so it's just suggesting that somebody from council is uh goes and talks to somebody from the township um in terms of the um township trustees to see if they are open to looking into this further. Um, I think that's a natural step that came out of our
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our work session. Um, so I don't know, it's like, does anybody want to volunteer, I guess?
Um, I'm already going to be meeting with Marilyn Moyer so I can get her assessment, initial, her initial assessment anyway.
Great, excellent. That that sounds like a good use of a free planned meeting. Excellent. All right, Gavin, uh.
Yeah, so um, so that would be that that piece. And then Mary Ann, you just report back, I guess, on what is said. And then if we need to have other meetings or anything that we would can talk about it. Um, the first recommendation is um, you know, more text. Most of this is just copy and paste from the previous uh memos, and we've talked about it previously. Um, so I I think this is in keeping with where we left off the last time, which was that instead of doing two committees, which was the um last recommendation, there would be one committee. Um, the goal and scope of the committee is uh here. I'd be happy to talk about it more if it's, you know, if folks want to. Um, I've got some, you know, notes in here about, you know, how the committee would operate and these kinds of things. You know, the my hope was that it would be helpful to whoever is on the committee to have some sort of grounding. Um, but my assumption was that the whoever the committee is would ultimately be working to figure out um what the um, you know, what the sort of scope and what the um, you know, process would be specifically. Um, I'll just say, I guess the one part of that that I feel pretty strongly about personally is the idea that this committee is communicating back with council regularly so that this is not the kind of thing, or I was assuming that somebody would go off and meet for a few months and then come back at the end and do like a five-minute presentation or something. Um, the sort of found, you know, the the main purpose of this is that we're having a a shared uh and, you know, everyone is deepening their understanding about these issues um functionally so that we're not making decisions without uh solid information uh as part of the budgeting budgeting process. So my hope would be that whoever is on the committee would um, you know, be able to commit to communicating back with council uh at our meetings on a regular basis and that that would give an opportunity for uh full council to uh communicate, engage. The part of the original reason for having two committees was because I know there were at least four of us, and it's this four of us that expressed interest in um working on the topic. And just because of sunshine law, we cannot have four people on a committee. So the report backs for council are important so that there is a time for um, you know, everybody on council to be engaged. So I guess I would ask, are there any questions or comments about it? And then we could move to if folks want to set up a committee that we would do that.
Um, well, it sounds like recommendation two is covered. Um, and and Mary Ann, I would just just for goodness sake, um, you said you've already scheduled a meeting with Marilyn. Um, I think it would be a good idea maybe to get the questions out to her because, I mean, she, I don't know, I can't think of what they, I can't remember what their schedule is. They may have met already. Um, township, but I I would imagine she would have to bounce things off of her colleagues before she could commit. I could be wrong, but.
I I would assume so. And and as I was writing down this, it I realized, I think, really Chief Byrd should be involved in this discussion, uh, even maybe an an the initial discussion. I don't know. And I'm not sure, I mean, I remember um chief, fire chief.
Oh, oh.
Did did talk at one of our meetings, I think one of the joint meetings with the the school board about sort of pros and cons, but I'm not sure if there has been discussion between Chief Byrd and Chief Altman. Um, so I don't know where that stands. And I'm willing to take some role in helping that move forward, but clearly I think that needs to happen too.
So Chief, jump in if you, if I'm not remembering this correctly, but at the work session, it was clear you had talked with I think, tell me if I was saying this wrong. I was under the impression at that meeting that you had communicated with Chief Altman and that where we left at that meeting was that there had not been, so there had sort of been like staff to staff conversation, but that ultimately there would be, it would, there would need to be some um, you know, elected body to elected body engagement. And so that I was, I certainly did not mean to dismiss or uh upend or whatever that engagement that had been going on was just thinking there was another layer to see whether or not, in the same way that we kind of did like a straw poll of like, is there even interest in this? To check with them to see if there was interest before um, you know, making some assumption there's more work to do. But tell me if that was, if you thought about it differently.
Uh, no, so I invited Chief Altman to our work session specifically because that item was on the agenda. Um, we had just a very superficial conversation that, hey, this is being presented, very pilot phase. I've got a lot, a lot of information from our local police department that does that, Oakwood. Um, and so please join the conversation because I I wanted his input, as I'm sure you guys did as well. So that was the extent of our conversation. We've not formally sat down and discussed our thoughts and feelings and sang a song together about it or anything yet. So I I think that's important, Mary Ann, yes.
Oh.
It was, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, I, and this could be complete. It was my recollection from, it is my recollection from this, the meeting, is that there are a lot of um details to work out that are uh time consuming and also I felt like Chief Altman was um I don't want to say against, but apprehensive about combining forces.
Yeah, I won't put words in his mouth. I think he definitely, um, eh, I think what he voiced were some common concerns that the fire industry at large has, I think. So just uh, I won't, I don't, I don't recollect his specifically what he said verbatim, but I know that he expressed some concern about speaking with other fire departments who have merged and some of the issues they ran into. So I don't know that he was necessarily giving his, this is my hard stance or anything like that. So, but you're you're remembering that correctly.
Right.
So.
Uh, also, I think he he's leaving this year.
I think July, yeah.
July, so I'll talk with Marilyn and just sort of see what she thinks. But it may be that any kind of, if they wanted to consider moving forward, they would want to wait until they get someone else in that position.
Can I just throw something out here that? I mean, if we compared it to something else and we said, you know, Johnny, we're going to have all your guys cross-trained with everyone who does all the groundskeeping and maintenance for Mills Lawn. We're going to have y'all help each other out and work with each other, and we're just going to do that if we think it is a good idea. I would, it would seem very odd to do that without asking his entire crew and their entire crew, whether or not they actually wanted to do that cross-training and wanted to work together in that way. And I feel like, well, that's where I'd start because if no one on the ground wants to do that to begin with, it would probably be real hard to get it happening up here. So maybe that would be a good place to start. Just have, you know, both chiefs get a beat on that.
I think that's, that is, I'll just speak for myself. That is one, one level of communication, one level of question that I think is, I think there is total value in trying to get an assessment of that question. And I think it makes sense to get a sense about where the elected bodies are.
Hmm.
Because uh functionally, I'm trying, I don't know what the, what a good example would be, but um, yeah, just because the staff is not for it does not mean that it could not be a good idea. That's all. So it's clearly a a piece of information that we should get, but I don't think it's the only piece. And I just, so we're all talking about the same thing. This is, a- as I understood it from the conversation we had, we're talking about like, this is going to take a decade. Like this is like, there's no, like, this is going to turn around really quickly. But it's just, is it even worth any time to think about? Check with their body. If their elected body is like, nope, we have no interest, then let's just not waste any more time on it. But if there is some interest, because there is some long-term thing, then we can get into stuff. But it's, there's no, it's not like we're talking about there being any change.
Sure.
Anytime, even reasonably soon.
So so regarding this uh memo, uh, there were two recommendations. Mary Ann, you're taking the lead on recommendation two that will probably include uh working with Chief Byrd as you'll um, you know, form some diplomatic crew to to go talk to to the township. Um, recommendation one, um, i- i- is effectively a a drill down, if you will, into um uh public safety operations to ensure with the ultimate goal to ensure that uh council members are well-versed in. In all things public safety and are able to respond to citizens. Um, in in a conversational uh mode about where things are and why things are the the way they are. I, if I were to make up a reason why uh public safety i- is one of the things that we're talking about in this regard. I would submit that in our effort to be as transparent as possible with a budget planning. Um, and I've used this phrase once before, low hanging fruit, you know, people think, oh, well, yeah, the biggest thing, that's the easiest thing to cut. Um, and and if that is not actually true, we need to convince folks of 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 that fact. So ha- ha- having said that, where the recommendation of one is proposing to council members. Um, unless there's violent disagreement. Uh, I would propose myself and Gavin, if you're willing to work on this committee. And I would say, let's look at it as um almost as as the first meeting being like a trial run. To just sort of see um what the process could look like, uh how available information is. Are there unanswered questions? Is it just a matter of of informing uh more folks? Uh-oh, my, don't matter, on screen, just Blake. Um, so. Thoughts, uh, counsel, I made a proposal, the 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 memo. Um, office of a proposal about this committee and I'm um. My my first, I I think I want to be on uh the committee, the recommendation one um refers to. And since it talks about two council people, my first thought would be you, Gavin, but we, it could be any anyone else if 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 you think that's not going to be a good, good fit.
Well. I um. Me, it seems like the first recommendation is really understanding how the police department works. Um, and then the second part is, are there, do we see? Changes that could be made that could um. Cost us less money and 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 evaluating those changes. And I would be very interested in taking a later shade on. Uh, really understanding how the police department works. And and by that, what I mean is actually hate spending time there, significant time without. Without getting in people's way, but just so I can understand and see what is happening. Including how many people are working, what they're doing, you know, a twenty four hour and and take a week or maybe take a couple of weeks to spend. A significant amount of time doing that, and I say that partly because I'm very interested. I don't understand it. I. I I I can sort of understand. Streets and things like that because they're out there, but I don't understand how the police department works. The other thing is I have some time that I could do that.
Okay.
But I don't need to be on a decision. I don't, that's the piece that is interesting to me, that I'd be willing to do. As opposed to looking at options and all that.
Right.
I don't know how that would fit in.
Could I ask a question as well? Um, I think this probably is a good place. So looking through the recommendation one here, there's a lot of bullet points about um. Some of the things that we want to get answered, right? And so you mentioned coming in. Doing, spending significant time with us on a day to day basis, um, which is one way to kind of get a a picture of what we do. Is there any other way that we plan to quantify or to to really define the answers to these questions that you guys are planning? So how is it that you're going to reach these um understandings, if you will, or answer these questions for yourselves?
Well, well, I would, I would, if you don't mind, council uh colleagues, um. Chief, I would, I would yield to you and I would um. I would yield to you, period. Parenthetically, I would submit that you have. Done a yeoman's job to offer. Information that can be used to answer a lot of these questions. So again, I don't think we're operating in a vacuum. I think it's just a matter of. We common folk here uh understanding um all the data that you presented. Uh, so that we can be well versed in it as a, as a group.
Okay.
Um, and uh Mary Ann has expressed interest uh because she is interested and wants to know. I'm interested because I am, a- and I think um. I I I would submit that Marion and I have potentially slightly different perspectives. On things, and so I think it's important to have that balance.
Sure.
So I I think, uh, you know. Again, offering myself and and if Mary Ann wants to do that, I think we can do that. Whatever it takes, I'd say again, as I noted too earlier, let's just sit down, want to just sit down. And 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 that first meeting might just be defining. The problem. And 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 again, I don't think it'll be that hard, but yeah, we'll be there, we'll do ride alongs, we'll, we'll, we'll live a day in our life. Uh, the proverbial we, and not necessarily. So um, i- i- are we good for that as a start, so we can just put a stick in the ground saying. Man and I will, uh, Mary Ann and I will get with Chief Burge and whoever else we we need to talk to so that we can become. Public safety experts, so to speak. And then, Mary Ann, you're also taking the lead on uh interacting with the township.
I'd like to hear what Carmen and Gavin have to say.
Yep.
I don't have any comments at this point, except for the one that I brought up earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm comfortable with where this, where this is going. Um. Chief, to your question, I I think I agree with Kevin in general that the, it seems like the large majority of information is going to come from you. And then it's, so I I I think this this idea of like a first meeting to sort of define. Like here are the things that we want or need, so we talked about this in this uh as in pre, uh, when this previous memo was brought forth. So that, for instance, like. Well, so the bullet point under committee work may include, understand the pros and cons of our current staffing size. And you had said when we had met here, talking about this previously, that, hey, actually, when you do the math, there's not really any flexibility here.
Right.
So. Um, I I think. Some of this, you've already got the information. Now, is that the case if we use any of the different staffing models, et cetera? I I think it's the kind of thing where with a series of questions, we could get some, you know, get that answered relatively quickly, and then that may end up. Cutting off a whole other series of questions. So, for example, if we have the size, if the size of the police department is at its minimum level currently. Uh, that it can be period, then a series of other questions about changing the size of the department. Unless we're, you know, interested in pursuing a totally different configuration of how we do policing. Which I'll just say, I haven't heard any indication of that is the case. That set of questions may fall off the table. Uh, so it's just a matter of, you know, going right, you know, making sure we're looking at those questions one by one. Now, some of these other bullet points, like. If there are budget limitations, how to weigh the needs in public safety with the needs in other areas, I don't think that's your, you know. I'm not, certainly don't want to ask you to make a recommendation or make a. You know, um, to put you in a position where you have to say this versus something in public works or versus something in, you know, another department. Um, so I think there are some of these bigger questions that are um, you know, things that we're trying to get at so that we can figure out, because. I guess just to say it really bluntly, right now, we have to either raise revenue or or cut costs to make our budget balance next year. And I have yet to hear anyone raise their hand saying, I want to have my budget cut, and I have not heard anyone yet raise their hand saying, I'm really excited about X revenue increase. So one way or the other, we're going to probably have some tough choices to make, just trying to make sure we've got all the information that we can to um figure out what choices we have to make.
Um, all right, very good. That that helps me understand a little bit more. Um, and I think maybe perhaps the committee members that are tasked with recommendation one. A good place to start might be a meeting with me, just the two of us, and and let's see if we can get some of those bullet points knocked off. And then I would just propose a recommendation, and I I know I've capitalized on a lot of our time that we've already made up here, but um. I'd like to include our finance director. I mean, I don't want to volunteer her time by any means, but I also think that her hat, she has the greatest understanding of our budget and um. Is the, is where we're starting, where we should be starting. Are there other things? And I, and she would be the the experienced professional to to say that. And so that would just be a recommendation I'd like to add, and then I will return the time to the people.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, unless uh 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 unless Amy is in.
No, I just want to come back to the table because Gavin, you had under uh. Potential future committee work considering options of level of service and you suggested yourself and Carmen. And I do think we may want to consider options. For example, I mean, I I don't know whether that's possible or not, but I know that there is um. Uh, I know that the chief has asked us not to talk about dispatch, but I am. Um. Is there a possibility of having, and I'm not, I'm, this is a rhetorical question, not. I'm not not as asking for the answer, dispatch during the hours that people use dispatch for. This is where you call when you want to know whether something's going on, as opposed to. Say ten at night to six in the morning or something. Is it possible to have a blended dispatch that works sort of during the day and at night it goes to nine one one? So there are some possibilities that we might want to look at.
Um, I know it's rhetorical, but we're not legally allowed to do that.
And um. And I I'm was less interested in sort of developing the options at at than and for me personally, how I'm spending, I spend my time looking at. How it works and one thought I had, and I know people say, well, Cedarville is much different than Yellow Springs, but. Being able to, oh, and I have talked to the chief, hmm, probably quite a while ago in Cedarville. Figure out why, why do they spend what one third of what we spend to sort of be able to actually look at it and break it down. Well, this is why, because. One, they pay their officers less, or they use the county, or they don't use dispatch, or whatever it is, so that there's a clear sort of thing. So I, you know, I think there are some things. That we could, it could be done if we want to spend the time to do that.
All right.
But it, have you made a decision as to which two people are on the committee? Because this needs to get offline.
Yes, Kevin and Mary Ann.
Okay, and.
I'm not, I do not want to do everything that's listed.
So I, and I would just respond to Mary Ann's interest in all things police. That that offer has been made by the police department for, since I have started working here. You can go bring your sleeping bag and hang out with them for hours on end at any given time and learn all that you can learn. Paige is looking at, like, maybe don't bring your toothbrush, but that is not, I mean, that is something you can always do, and so I think the critical piece is. That. Committee work.
Yep.
Okay, and this needs to happen here with us.
Yes, ma'am.
So. I I said, that's the piece that I'm interested in.
Understood.
I'm not interested in all the rest beyond that.
So. Could I throw this out there, Mary Ann? I think what you're talking about, because the stuff that you're mentioning that was just a copy and paste that had my name and Carmen's name on it is like sort of. I was thinking about that as sort of like a second set of things that we may, that may get looked into. Would the two of you be game to do sort of what's in here as the first set of things, with the first step of which is to talk with staff? To come to to sort of agree on what those things are, and then, and then if you reach a point where you, that, that you um. My hope is that there would be some specified body of work that you would say, I'm game to do this part. And then if it gets to the point where there needs to be future work, then handoff.
What I would like to suggest is that Kevin and I get together.
Yep.
Off. Line and decide what we're willing to do and what we recommend.
Right, and 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 Gavin, just for the record, I feel like the answer is yes to you. Okay. All right, thank you, chief. Thank you, everyone, uh, for your participation in the discussion. Um, Gavin, was there anything else you wanted to say before we move on?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. So what we have um on the agenda, um, in the printed agenda. Uh, for under new business, we're two reports by Brian House. Uh, Brian is not here. Does someone else have uh those reports you present? If not, that was a very short wait, I want to acknowledge, uh, but I'm not hearing anything.
I did write up something that's uh. The housing, just the summary of um the notes from the housing workshop.
But and the one, the one piece about that that I know Mary Ann wanted to get from any of you was if you had any. Any difference in your understanding of what she'd. Laid out as, as what you'd kind of. Come to an agreement on with regard to moving forward on housing issues, so. And and I know you'd wanted that to happen at the table, Mary Ann, so that that can be. Publicly discussed.
I only just skimmed it when we got here, but it seemed fine to me. I mean, ultimately. You and Brian and um Hossway and potentially other staff are going to talk and bring something back, and that's appropriate.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, good enough. So uh, I know we're not, but but thank you. You, I see you're doing future, so thank you. So that will take care of those two issues that are currently on the agenda.
Yep.
And now the admission is, I wrote plasticware. I'm sure it's more.
You want to start the timer, Judy?
Yeah.
Why start?
I'll start, I'll start the timer. We're sticking to our three minute rule.
Okay, fine, yeah. Single use plastics. Um, this is a conversation that I have had with Hossway and then recently with Brian about looking to enact some type of. Single use plastic ordinance, which would determine um what single use plastics that are non compostable can and cannot be sold in the village. Uh, this, some ordinances like this started to take some traction back in in Ohio in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then COVID hit. Um, and at some point in there, the legislature put a one year moratorium on single use plastic bans. So that moratorium is now lifted. Um, I was reading, we emailed earlier today, a a sample that I found from the city of Bexley in northern Ohio, they have a, um, they have a great sample to look at. And the Bexley ordinance, it, of course, everybody thinks about plastic bags at the grocery store, that is part of it, right? That's a big part of it. So it would be a ban on those single use plastic bags at the grocery store that are, if they are non um compostable. But then also the Bexley ordinance goes a little farther and um there's a ban on plastic lids for drinkware. Pla- uh stirs, plastic straws and flat wire, plastics everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
It does not ban, in Bexley, it does not ban plastic cups. So, um, I mean, Judy and I have joked before about when you get a drink in a plastic cup and all the uses that we put them for around our house, so I suppose there's arguments there about why maybe. Um, we wouldn't want to extend the ban to that, but that's all up for discussion. Nothing is drafted. The reason we're having the conversation tonight is to see if there's interest on council to go ahead and bring something back. Um, with the idea being that for timing purposes, if we go ahead and start tackling it now, it could be in place for street fair.
All right, all right.
Does that include plastic bags in store or not?
Yes, it would be plastic bags in stores would be, that's, that's the um. Really, the, probably the lead purpose of it would be to ban that particular type of pl- single use plastic bag.
Right, and I'm glad you said it's type of plastic, because it's, wouldn't be banning plastic bags, it would be changing.
Oh, yes, I fell into that rabbit hole today when I read the Bexley ordinance because it made reference to a couple of um standards that I wasn't aware of about compostable plastic. And um, there are plastic bags out there that are of a different quality, of a different material that aren't as um harmful to the environment, so. Those would be allowed, or of course, there's all the other options, right? Stores can sell their own bags at a cost um to the, to the um customer. And um, one nuance of this to consider is um certain things like dry cleaning bags and, you know, there's, there are certain times where those single use plastics need to be used. Uh, so we'll have, there's nuances to work out.
One of the things I'm thinking about, so like Tom's, I already know, they they use a plant based, like corn based plastic bag. Um, so how would that, I'm thinking about the Dollar General. How is that, I mean, that's a, they're huge.
Mm-hmm.
And would that be, you know, how would, how would we?
Right, so um, the, some of the larger chains, like for example Kroger has already announced by twenty twenty five, they're going to go to, they're going to do away with all their single use plastic bags. For that, for a company like Dollar General, we, you know, there, once the ban was in place, it would apply to them. Um, and then like the Bexley ordinance is a criminal um penalty, it's not a civil penalty. So that's, that would be tricky, that would take some conversations, but this wouldn't be the first time they faced it anywhere in the country, right? And there's certain states um that have single use plastic bans in place already at statewide level, so presumably if they're in those states, they're familiar with. How they're, whatever they're doing there. Um, so yeah, that that's a great example. We, we were talking earlier, we didn't come up with Dollar General, but that's. Um, one we need to work through, you know, supplier.
So as one council member, I support that and thank you.
Okay.
Indeed, I think we're in agreement.
And the um, the draft that I will bring to you will be. And the um, the draft that I will bring to you will be something that, you know, a smaller group of us work through based on other examples and, you know, Cincinnati and Columbus. Uh Cuyahoga County, there are some examples around the state. And then it's, we can take it from there and, and work through it. And if you want changes, we can, we'll have enough time to work. Work through that and get it revised.
Alright, great.
Great, thanks.
Great. How was the time?
And I want to admit for you on three minutes, we're trying to keep ourselves in check.
Yeah, okay. And Mark, now that that's been shared, I did refer to you earlier to think you wanna add anything?
First of all, I wanted to say that I love the idea of not having single-use plastic cups. That's a great idea. The problem comes with the logistics. Um Green County Health Department has said that we can refill cups. Our local vendor says they will not refill cups because they're afraid of cross-contamination between beer taps. Now, it comes to the definition of what is a single-use plastic cup? If you have those nice stout plastic cups, like I, and, and I recall this from my days in San Antonio, when I went to Fiesta and I walked away with a stack of. Plastic cups this big after, at the end of the night. Though they're not single-use, it's just that we couldn't re, they were not refillable. And so that's the part of the discussion. I'm absolutely open to this discussion for the, for street fair. Um we need to discuss that. One of the things that I do wanna make really, really clear, if we're talking about um compostable cups, that brings on a special problem. Because you have to have a, you have to have a system in place with an army of volunteers to be able to separate and make sure that the consumers know. That these compostable items go into a compostable um repository. I know this because I was a part of working with uh Five Rivers Metro Parks in their zero-waste program with um Subaru. Wider Subaru uh outdoor experience. They did a magnificent job, but they have, they have an army of volunteers. It took them seven years to get there. So that's basically, there, there's, there's a, there's a, a, um, there seems to be an, an opinion out there that, that, that the chamber is against. Um doing away with single-use cups. And that's not at all the case. It's just a matter of that there, it, it's going to be. A dance. Is it, is it, there are logistics that need to be worked out, but happy to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Um. Amy, did you say that, that some of the stuff you've seen, Bexley did address?
Did not include cups.
Okay. Okay, great. So everything but cups from Bexley, thanks, thanks. Alright, any other comments on this issue from anyone?
My name's Rose O'Brien.
Yeah, please.
And I, I'm the one that had written a comment about bringing this up. I grew, and uh. I'm actually gonna go to Rumkey to do a tour of their, of their recycling in Cincinnati. And composting of plastics is, is really sketchy. You have to have industrial. And I don't know that we've got that in this area, which is one of the reasons that I'm gonna go to Rumkey. So, and there's different, different levels of it. And nine percent, and that's the average, nine percent of plastic gets recycled. That's it. And, and the rest of it goes to landfill. So I think if you're gonna do it. Just do it. It, it gets painful if you, oh, let's not do bags, and let's not do straws, and then let's not do, it's just, we gotta do it. We just have to stop doing it. We have to stop using it.
Right. So, so, so Rose, I do appreciate uh that information. And um if you find some nuggets at Rumkey, would you be willing to come back and share?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
You should not bring them back.
Yeah, that stuff you pick up off the floor. No, no, no. Alrighty, uh thank, thank you again, every, I'm.
I, I would just like to add on the, you mentioned Rumkey and bringing nuggets back. Rumkey has a longstanding invitation to every council member that they're happy to give. Individual group tours of the recycling facility and any other uh services that you're interested in. And seeing uh that Rumkey operates. So that is something that you are interested in, I can arrange uh for tours.
Sounds like a thing that should happen. Alrighty, um. I'm feeling like, so do we have um, do you have anything on, in terms of the board and commission reports from planning commission?
I didn't submit anything in writing. We didn't have any hearings. Three minutes, what? Yeah, we didn't have any hearing. So we had a presentation from neighbors, uh for more neighbors and it, there's conversation ongoing. Uh there'll be text amendment, text amendment changes brought to the next planning commission meeting. So um I think there will be future conversation about this, but it's not like a thing we need to put on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gotta get over their hurdle before it comes to, to your, so the public hearings will tell that tale.
Great, great. Alright, thank you for that, Gavin. And now we are on to future agenda items.
Wow, your next meeting should last about a week. Um I've added housing, next steps, paid parking action steps, ordinance regarding single-use plastics, updated laws in place pro forma. And. Addition to everything else that's on there, which is a whole lot. So we're gonna have to do a lot in agenda planning to.
Well, I wanna put volunteer stuff on there, so.
You're on. I, that had been requested for the twentieth. If you wanna move it up, we can try to.
No, let's not move it up.
Right, yeah, I think, yeah, the sixth is looking, the sixth is looking.
Stop super fast, everybody.
Yeah, right. No, I think the sixth is, is plenty. I'm, I'm afraid of that.
Okay, where are you going?
For future agenda?
Yep, it's on, got it.
Yeah, the annual report for EC is next, next, next meeting.
Correct.
You have to wait till the gavel.
Well, I'm not hearing anything. Um if there's nothing else, uh if all hearts and minds are clear, I, I will accept a.
Another bag.
I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Great, it's been great. Thank you, everyone. Good night.